I call to order the Board of Commissioners meeting, December 6, 2012. Those who would, please join it in the prayer and the pledge.
Please bow. Dear only Father, we thank you for this day that you have created for us, Father, and the many blessings that you bestow upon us. Father, we just want to remember the reason for this season, that's your birth of your son Jesus Christ. Father, we ask that you would guide these men and women as they undertake the business of the city, that their decisions would be in the best interest of the citizens. Father, we ask these things in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. No, is he here?
You can do it.
Is he here?
She needs to...
I don't have the... The next item is swearing-in of the newly-elected officials. Judge Taylor?
It'll only be a sitting Williamson County judge, the county clerk, or the county mayor.
This being deferred?
I would say call recess real quick.
First, second, all in favor? Recession moment, please. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to item five, if I may. Citizens' comments. Mr. Roger Gully, would you approach the podium, please? Good evening. You have three minutes to share your comments.
I'm here in concern of the subdivision that's asked to be developed on Overby Road. First off, I want to say that I'm not opposed to construction. I think construction is good. What I'm opposed to is the sewer system that is proposed to be developed up there. I'm on Walker Road. Overby Road has city water. I'm on Walker Road, which is just right below, which all the runoff will be running down to Walker Branch, that runs right beside Walker Road. And the only water source we have is springs and wells on Walker Road. And if this subdivision contaminates our water supply, what are we to do? There's no backup water, there's no city water, and it's, I would say, costs quite a lot of money to run it down through there. You know, the city paid a lot of money and has done a lot of work to get rid of sewer systems in the city of Fairview. And it seems to me like we would be going back in time, because we're not asked to hook this up to the sewer system, are we? I think it's gonna be some type of private septic system up there, that I understand?
It's not gonna be on sewer.
Okay, alright.
But one of the plans that were presented was ours, like the dryers, and it's separated out.
And it's gonna be disposed of on that property. And, you know, the city of Fairview has spent the last 20 years trying to get out away from that, you know? The soil in Fairview, and, you know, don't take my word for it, talk to a soil scientist, but our soil, we don't have that much topsoil in Fairview. We really don't, the sewer systems are not that great here. You know, it's such trouble in Williamson County. In the '50s, the groundwater control in Williamson County sued the state to have their own regulations, because they felt like that our soil was so poor, we needed stricter regulations here than everywhere in the state. And so, the county, we have our own soil scientists here, and they make the rules, and it seemed like that this would go first through groundwater control and see what they have to say about it. I just can't imagine them passing this, at least under the guidelines that they are wanting to build it. So, I would, you know, like to, we don't have this anywhere else, and I would like for each of you to ask yourself, do you really know what you're voting on when you vote for this? And when you do vote, I would ask you to vote no, especially if you don't understand this, what's going on, because I don't think the city has ever been asked to vote for this before. And I kinda doubt that we ever will be. And I just, you know, because I don't, on Walker Road, I don't know what we're gonna do if it fails. We're gonna be in a lot of trouble. And two, you know, it's not gonna be into city limits, and it's not gonna be a city sewer. And the way I understand it, if you annex a property into the sewer, you have, I mean, into the city, you have about 20 years to provide them all the services. Are you gonna have to take in 20 years, put city sewer down there? I don't know. That's just a question.
We don't have a city sewer system. The Water Authority of Dixon County takes care of the sewer for the city of Fairview. So, we don't offer it, nor do we provide it. That system would be turned over to them at that point.
Well, I would just ask y'all to vote no on it.
Thank you for your comments. Citizen comments. It's been stated that we will delay item number two, three. The county mayor, Rogers Anderson, is heading this way. So, I'll ask for approval of the agenda.
I'd like to add something to it as possible. I'd like to add, under 10, I don't know, 10B for us to vote on the recommendation from the beer board to assign the funds collected from the police thing we did with the beer board, the $6,500 directed to the drug fund.
Any other additions or deletions?
Ms. Mayor, we'd like to ask that item B and C, under O Business, be deferred until we can get, there's some more paperwork that we've got to get together, based on the new legislation that was passed, this past legislative system, or session, that we're gonna have to provide to you all before y'all can vote on those two items.
Those are deferred. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? What are the wishes of the board?
Move to second.
We have a first and second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, item number six is awards and recognitions.
Mayor, I do have something tonight, and I'm not sure if it's awards, recognition, or public announcements, so we'll kinda throw it out here now. Next Friday, December 14th, we're gonna have what I think is a special presentation to all of our elementary school students. Angela Courtney, who is our grant writer, has a nonprofit organization in honor of her, in memory of her son. And through the HEFER International Organization, she has gotten donated about 1,028 books for our students at Westwood Elementary and Fairview Elementary. So, next Friday, the 14th, at nine o'clock, we're gonna have a presentation to a small group of students, because we couldn't present them to all of them, but we've been invited to be there at 8:30 for the assembly and pledge of allegiance, and just to be recognized. So, I encourage you to be there for that. And then after that, at nine o'clock, we'll have a short time with a few students, and we'll read, hopefully some of you could read to them, if you so feel led to, have some police officers, police captain, fire captain there. And then at 10 o'clock, we'll repeat the same thing over at Westwood Elementary. So, if you could join us, we really think that that's wonderful on Angela's part, to think about our schools when she works, really basically nationwide, and she selected three schools in Tennessee, and two of them are here. So, that's the only three schools that she got books for. So, we're really filled with honor, very blessed about that. So, if you can be there, we'd appreciate it.
Is Sonia Westwood at Fairview Elementary?
At 8:30 at Fairview, and then at 10 o'clock at Westwood. That's all I have, Mayor.
I have a special presentation I'd like to take this time. The Tennessee Land Trust, or Land Trust for Tennessee, has sent us, it says, "I'm truly excited to tell you about Home to Us, Six Stories of Saving the Land." We have been presented, the city of Fairview has been presented a beautiful book, kind of a coffee table book, Home to Us, and it says, "The day has come, Home to Us, Six Stories of Saving the Land is hot off the press, and we couldn't have done it without you. This tapestry of stories woven beautifully through, interlacing words and images, explores the timeless and essential connection between people and the physical environments they call home. I want to thank each and every one of you for your commitment to protecting your land, which is Bowie Park, for being a part of the Tennessee Land Trust's family. As promised, please find your complimentary copy enclosed as a small token of appreciation for what is done to contribute. These are your stories you'll find yourself on page 182. It's printed in the honor roll." It says, "Dear Mayor Totti, thank you for the citizens of, thank you to this, thank you and the citizens of Fairview for being such good stewards of Bowie Park. Hope you enjoy the book. Take care. Emily Parrish." And I'd like to present this to Ms. Grimmenstein, the librarian at Fairview Library.
I understand there are 75,000 acres to protect, and we need to protect them at all costs. And thank you so much.
It's my honor to present to Ms. Kathy. She's another wonderful heartbeat of Fairview. Any other words and recognitions from the board? I guess I'll jump out again. We have gotten thank you notes for our contribution and our diligence in the schools, from the schools for the money that we proposed out of the school facility fund. This particular letter, and I have had thank yous from all principals, but this one is from the Fairview Middle School, and it just says, "We, as we move forward into increasing technology-centered learning, it is good to know that our students are finding ways to explore, create, and research by using their new iPads. It's a season of Thanksgiving, and is my sincere hope that this letter conveys our tremendous appreciation in some small way. Your truly, I think it's magnificent, stakeholders in our school and our community." Thank you very much. There be none others. We'll roll on. The public announcements?
Mayor, just want to remind everyone, as usual, about the emissions testing at the Highway 96 Fire Station on Tuesdays from 7:30 till noon.
Any other announcements from the board? There's several things going on Saturday, the 8th. Can't call them all, but please check your community calendars and your local newspaper or online, because there are several activities going on throughout the month of December. Item number eight, yes?
Is it this weekend, the Helping?
There is a Helping Hands, we have a sponsorship in the area, and the Helping Hands will be at the middle school.
Is it Friday or Saturday?
I believe it's Saturday. And there is, meet Sana, have breakfast with Sana.
Both elementary schools.
Do you know the time?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty Saturday at both elementary schools? There'll be, I won't say that. Two things. Alright, approval of the minutes. The minutes of November 1st, 2012?
Move to approve.
We have a first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Item number nine, A, O Business, second and final reading on Bill 2012-15.
Bill number 2012-15, ordinance number 794, ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located at 2725 Fairview Boulevard, owned by Fast-Paced Medical Clinic LLC, and Richard "Green" Spire Jr. shown on the city of Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Role Map 69, parcel 60, from RS40 to CG Commercial General. Move to approve.
Mayor, first and second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, move. Item number nine, D, discuss and/or take action on Windstream Communications Solutions. Director LaVorn?
We have Mr. Jonathan Kirby back with us from Windstream.
Do you have his phone, sir?
We have Mr. Jonathan Kirby with us from Windstream. Our task from the last meeting was to get with interactive solutions, and Mr. Tim Slade with the 323 link, to make sure that what we were proposing to do with Windstream did not interfere with the local television cast going out over Comcast. That conference call that we had, everyone had agreed that it would not interfere with the Comcast television cast or broadcast going out over Channel 19. And they do have a presentation, for some reason, it's not coming out.
Hello, welcome.
Hello. How are you?
Great.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Mayor, for allowing us to speak to you, council members. Thank you. Just to reiterate a little bit about what Don said, we did have the meeting with the individuals, and we also determined that there was a greater need for more bandwidth for City Hall. And so, we have adjusted our proposal to reflect an increase in bandwidth for City Hall, to help you do some of the high-definition broadcasting that you're wanting to do. So, we have adjusted it a little bit for bandwidth, according to what the vendors of the AV equipment told us that the specs required, so. Just to let you know, we also made a couple of changes on some of the phone counts. It wasn't anything drastic, but we accommodated the chief of police with some more phone sets for his department, and, like I said, we increased the bandwidth. But it was a very good meeting. So, we would like to talk to you tonight about the implementation plan. Mr. LaVorn said that you guys had some questions, and he had brought them to my attention, so we're here to answer any questions that you might have. But I'd just like to go through high level on the implementation plan. On the first slide, it just tells you how we are structured around the city of Fairview. And you obviously have me as an account executive, but you also have an account management team that is gonna be there, our district sales director as well. We have a sales engineer that would be on board with this as well, and he is standing next to me. His name is Michael Martin. I brought him along in case there was any technical issues that you wanted to talk about. We also have a quality control team in place that would help post-cut over for any rapid response, changes, anything like that, that needed to be made right after you cut it over. We also wanted to let you know that you would have a dedicated project coordinator, who would coordinate the entire rollout of the project for the city, and they would be in communication with your IT department to talk about things like timing, timeframes, when things would be delivered, and that type of thing. So, moving on, just some roles and responsibilities of what we are here to do. Obviously, I'm the one that would create the business needs, and we've met with Don to address those types of needs, and then we create a solution to match the needs. The district sales director, he is responsible for the contract and for the terms of the contracts, and we have a contract to present to the board tonight. Also, next step, of course, is the sales engineers, that I'm talking about, Michael's standing next to me. He would be the technical guy that's gonna make sure that this actually works. He's the smart guy, the zero's and the one guy. So, he is the one that would, has reviewed this, and, you know, it will work, the technology is sound. So, moving on, again, project coordination that we're talking about, we would have a dedicated project coordinator. Her name is Cindy Piper, and she handles the majority of our government and, how do I say, I guess, the more major account-type clients that we deal with. So, we would have one of our top project coordinators on it. As far as quality control, we talked a little bit about that. That's our installation satisfactory cut-over group. We call them the ISC group. They will make sure that once this is cut over, if there's any changes or anything that need to be made, they will be able to do that very quickly. So, they're a rapid-response team that helps right after it's cut over. As far as account management go, we have 12 account managers located in Brentwood. I've listed on here Ginger Gaines, she is our senior accounting manager, and Brian Waters, who is her boss, he's the regional account manager. They would do the first-month bill review. Also, they do quarterly reviews. They come out and talk to you and see if there's any technology that you might wanna move forward with, or you're looking to explore. So, they are account management team in place to help as well. Just a little bit about the design, and we talked some about this last time. It's personally engineered, it's custom-made, so it's not just an application that we throw out there and try to put you in our box. We're trying to design everything to the benefit of the city. The MPLS network is an acronym, and basically, it's going to give you quality of service, which will ensure that the phone calls that come into Town Hall will be able to transfer to the other locations without any echoes or interruptions or anything like that. Of course, we're providing the local long-distance and internet services. We also have the voice disaster recovery included, so if anything does fail, we have a very simple process to forward the lines out to the appropriate parties. And all of that can be set up and turned over, really at a flip of a switch. It just takes a phone call in order to activate that. That would be all set up as part of the solution. Again, local account management technical engineering technicians. None of this will be outsourced. Windstream has its own equipment, its own trucks, its own technicians, so it would be Windstream that would be handling your services. We are also talking about our high-speed fiber internet access. After the meeting that we had, we determined that a 10-meg MetroE fiber connection would be the best solution for the city. And so, I adjusted my proposal based on that. What it's gonna do for the city is not only will it give you a fiber connection in the City Hall, but it will allow you to expand. So, if the bandwidth needs go up, and you say, you know, six months down the road, you know, "We need more bandwidth, we've implemented something new," or "We're doing something new," then it's very easy with fiber in the building to turn that bandwidth from where we have it now. At 10 meg's, we can go all the way up to gigabit speeds without any major infrastructure overhauls or anything like that. So, the fiber will position you for the long, long term. It is an IP-based business-class network. We do not do residential services in the state of Tennessee. All of our clients, which we have about 4,300 of them in the metro Nashville area and surrounding counties, it's all IP-based business-class networks. I also prepared an installation timeframe, so you would know, once things are executed, how this would flow. And it's a pretty general timeframe. You know, obviously, when you do a project like this, something could come up to delay it, but generally, we have seen installations in a 90-to-120-day install timeframe when we're talking about fiber services. So, I laid out a timeline here, and I can go through it or not go through it, but basically, if you decide to move forward, we can execute the paperwork and place the actual orders within our systems. I will have to do some customer service record pulling to get the phone numbers, what they do, where they're at, that type of thing. Those are all electronic. The project coordinator's assigned to it. We come out, we send our technicians out, we do site surveys of all the locations to make sure that there's enough room for the equipment, enough power, and those types of things. We also then do our technical calls, which Michael would be a part of that, with Don and whoever the IT people that need to be involved. But we would do technical calls on design, IP schemes, and things like that. After that, we would order all of the circuits, and they would start installing them. And so, that's the process that takes 90 to 120 days. After that, we would schedule everything with the city and cut it over, or turn it After that, on April 30th is the timeframe that I laid out, you would have full voice and MPLS services turned up, the brand-new phone system would be in place, and everything would be cut over to Windstream at that point. You also asked me about a transition plan, so I laid out typically how transitions go. The first thing that we would do is install or port over any copper phone lines. Those are pots lines that you would, similar to what you would have in your home. Those are generally the easiest and first things we do. If there were any 800 numbers, we would do them next. After that, of course, the installation of the T1s and the MetroE circuits would be installed, and we would cut it over. Typically, internet is cut over first, because it is already live on the circuits once they are delivered. We would then port the voice services, and the question that was presented to me was, "How long would the city be down without phone services?" And I'm trying to give you a realistic goal of this. There are not that many telephone numbers to be ported, so actual porting time would take about five minutes. I'm saying my answer to that would be 30 minutes, just simply because they test things and make sure that the faxes and all of those types of issues are good. I expect that the city would be down, really, within about 15 minutes, for them to actually port the numbers. Everything is tested on our end before we port the telephone numbers. So, we would know that the internet's up, that the phones are connected, all of that stuff, before we physically pull the trigger on porting the numbers. After that, we're gonna cut over MPLS and just go on. That'll be the end of the project, basically. This is an implementation plan, and again, I've went over all of this, but we have a tried-and-true implementation plan that we follow for every installation. It doesn't matter if it's a client that just wants one T1, or if there's 100 sites. It's the same installation plan. A third-party reviewed it, and we've set this up. It's been in place since I've been at Windstream, I'm sure, much longer. But this is always the plan that we follow. You can see, it's the same thing that I went over when I was talking through it. We talk about strategy, we provision the circuits and those types of things. The site surveys are done, the network design, that's where Michael would get in with the IT people and make sure everything is good there. Again, we install and test every circuit that would be delivered to every location. We also have plant tests, date, times, and that is just so we come out and hang the physical equipment, and we deploy the IP telephone system at that point. So, we get the circuits, we test them, make sure they're good, then we come out and put the equipment out. And then, we just confirm with the city, you know, the date, the time, when you wanna do it, how do you wanna roll it out, and then we schedule it. And basically, from there, it's cut over, which is just, just means that the telephone numbers are ported and everything is turned up. After that, there's our quality control team in there to make sure that everything's like you need it. It will go, I will come out, as well as the account manager, to review the bill and make sure that the bill matches everything that the contract states. And then again, quarterly reviews. Just want to tell you a little bit about major account experience. A lot of things that we do, we proactively monitor our network, so we know when things happen. We have a very big network operations center located in Little Rock, Arkansas, as well as in Maitland, Florida, and we have one in Greenville, South Carolina. And they monitor everything from weather events to, you know, network outages, fiber cuts, just any kind of thing like that. You would have priority routing within our customer care center, because you are a government entity, so you are handled a little bit different than just an average business client. You would have the higher level... You would have the higher level. Typically, we do things based on how much money the client spends, but government comes into a different realm and they have priority. One thing that I did not mention, but I'd just like to say, we can also issue what's called telepho, or I'm sorry, telecommunications service priority. And that is a program that the federal government mandates down, where we can issue your circuits have priority for restoration with any kind of natural disaster or event that might happen. Typically, the way services are restored, if there's some kind of disaster or something, is you would have healthcare and you would have city governments, typically, police departments, hospitals, things like that are restored in an event of a natural disaster or an outage before anybody else would. So you're not going to have the Tennessee Titans or the Nashville Predators get priority over the restoration of your services because you are classified as a government entity. So I just wanted to lay that out there. You're also within our systems, again, a government, so it's a little bit different than just the private sector. We have people that can help with any kind of billing issues or service issues or anything like that. You would also receive automatic Windstream technician dispatch on anything that was a critical repair ticket. So if something was down, the technicians would be pulled off and brought to the city. This is just a snapshot, kind of our network operations center located in Greenville, South Carolina. Again, they just watch the network, make sure everything's working like it should. The last page is just your local support. This is a list of contact information for Windstream. It lists all the people within our organization that would be a resource for you as the city. And we have everybody up from a VP level to our major customer, customer support specialist, which is Dana. So I just wanted to give you all of that information as well. Again, I'd like to say thank you to the board and as well to you, Mayor Totti, for letting us present this presentation to you. And at this time, I'd like to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I do have, I do have one question. You mentioned in the bid or the quote for City Hall that you've added more bandwidth. I know that was discussed, but you said it was fiber. If you would not use fiber, what would be the next and what would be the cost difference between the two of those materials, I guess is the best word?
Okay. Originally, we had proposed to you guys to do a three-meg solution here, which is two bonded T1s at City Hall. After the meeting, you know, again, we agreed that it would be better to have more bandwidth. The step down, to answer your question, the step down from fiber would be to just bond T1s together in 1.5-meg increments. So we originally had a three-meg, which is two bonded T1s. The issue that I see on prices is, is I could give you three T1s and give you four and a half meg, but the pricing structure of fiber has come down. So at four and a half meg, you're better than to just go on and go to 10-meg with fiber because the pricing at that point, there's no sense in bonding T1s. The price is going to be too high if you just keep bonding T1s together.
Is there a basis? What's the difference? I mean, is there a basis that if you put two together, that makes three, so you're saying 10, so that's, let's just say you said nine?
Right.
That's three of those. Is there a basis of that amount? So I can understand the difference. I know fiber is much more expensive.
Well, yes, ma'am, it is somewhat expensive, but it's, again, the price of fiber has come down in recent years. So I guess what I'm trying to tell you is, is if we went to four and a half meg with three bonded T1s and then you said, I wanted to go to six meg and add one more to give you four, at that point, we might as well do fiber.
Would it cost more than fiber?
Yes, sir. It would cost more than fiber.
That's what she's wanting to hear.
Yes.
Thank you.
What is the price, is what she's asking?
Okay, so the three-meg price was $3,300 and I was able to get the 10-meg Metro E than that for 35. So I was able to get it in because I knew that we were up against some budget issues. So yes, ma'am, it's not really a big increase for you to go to 10.
Thank you. Other questions?
Well, the question is not necessarily for y'all, but it's for the city staff. What's the difference of what we're paying now versus if we go to this service?
We're paying $3,100, $34 a month. The original proposal that he, that was given to us, that was at, on the meeting, last, last meeting, was the three-meg was proposed at $3,597.32. With the 10-meg that he's now proposed and is in the contract that you got before you, that contract price is $3,492.42. And we're not, we're not going to ask you to approve the contract. I just put it up there for y'all to review. So if y'all want to move forward with it, we can put the contract on next meeting for y'all to approve if y'all want to move forward with it.
So the difference is 31, 34 and 3,492? The difference between that is what we're really deciding, existing and this upgrade?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So what's, when it says monthly charge by $577.92, what's our monthly?
What you got before you in that contract has it split out per building. But when you add the 507.92, the 451.84, the 469.90 and the 2,062.76, it comes to 3,492.42.
But the difference is, it's not just a replacement of what we currently have, it's an enhancement of the services.
This is, this is.
It will allow us to transfer from building to building and will also allow us to add additional telephones, which we are currently maxed out at.
Yes, sir. And it allows us to do the streaming of the board meetings as well, because right now we can't do the streaming because our bandwidth is too slow to allow us to do that. Like you said, with, with the fiber optics, if we need to upgrade that bandwidth, it's be a lot easier to do it through that fiber than it would be with the band at T1s.
And what does that get rid of? I mean, we still have our cable bill. We still, because there was conversation about Comcast and...
The only thing that you will have with Comcast is what you have right now, just for the television service that we have at City Hall. The internet service at the Public Works Building, Fire Station will go to Windstream and we won't have the Comcast there any longer. We won't have the DSL at the Nature Center, it'll be the Windstream. This is bringing, right now, we're paying Windstream, Black Box, AT&amp;T and Comcast. This solution was try to get as much under one provider, so we had one point of contact when we had outages. We had an outage in our internet service last week and we had to call all three providers to find out which person was really, we needed to be talking to. And we finally got to the person we needed to talk to, got us back online. If we had had one provider, then we made the one call and they would got us back on, you know, probably within 30 minutes. But this was an outage that lasted probably six or eight hours.
So the difference of the 358 between the two figures of current and the new proposal for the upgrades, that's 4,296 per year. Is that currently an administrative budget or in your, that's total administrative for the whole city, right, for general fund?
Is that correct?
It will hit the general fund telephone budget, but that's looking like it's, it's one of the watched items right now that's looking like originally it's going to go over budget. It wasn't budgeted properly. We didn't have the numbers that we have before us at budget time. So it's already looking as though it's going to go over budget. But if I understood the presentation right, it looks like we'll only have two months of the, of the billing with the new system, if it doesn't start until April 30th. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Yes. The city will not be billed by Windstream or anything until we physically cut everything over and it goes live.
And you're saying that's April of 2013?
That's what his, his presentation showed. Which means we'll have roughly $1,000 in the new system for this budget year, if I calculated correctly.
And that'll be discussed with our new budget?
We'll have to, yes, we'll have to increase the telephone budget next budget year also. But for the current year that we're in, that would require a budget amendment, so to speak, it'd be roughly $1,000 for the new system. Could potentially absorb it somewhere else if we look into the numbers closer.
What kind of percentage is... When you say it's over budget now in that line item, not that the two months makes a difference, but if we're going to have to go over budget and take money from somewhere, we don't want to add anything to it?
As of the end of November, it was 55%.
And we should be at snapshot?
Yeah.
38% maybe?
33%.
34 to 38?
We should be at 42%. It has to just be the calculation error at budget time. We didn't have, we hadn't compiled all the AT&amp;T bills. That was one we increased over from last year's budget, but apparently we didn't increase it enough because it, it also contains our cell phone bills, which have increased with new employees and new cell phones in that line.
Other comments or questions? What is your interest with the information presented tonight?
Well, like I said, I went ahead and provided y'all with the contract for y'all to look over. And if y'all want to proceed with this, we'll put it on the agenda for y'all to approve the contract next, on the 20th.
Has Larry reviewed it?
I gave, I provided him the copy as well tonight. I just got it yesterday.
And I do have another copy. I can, I'm more than willing to give it to you.
I haven't had an opportunity to look through it in detail. I've looked at it just quickly when I was given the copy tonight. It doesn't look any different from most communications contracts at first blush. But before next meeting, I'll have an opportunity to go through it in detail.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. I'd just like to add one more thing. If you see anything in there that is a concern to the city, if you would please let me know, we can, we can obviously get our legal team involved and some addendums can be written. So we're very flexible with that.
Thank you.
You can match the existing price, right? For our budget to match.
I don't know that we can match the existing price, but, you know, I tried to do my best, Keeter. Reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on, 9E, discuss and/or take action on welcome signs. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. We have, as I indicated to you in an email, we have moved along with trying to save a little money on, on the new welcome signs, less, we had the $20,000. We took the money out that we'd spent on engineering costs, it gave us roughly about $13,000 to do three signs. We've started the process on one of the signs coming up Highway 100 out of Bellevue into Fairview, and we have completed our part of it. Now we're waiting on the sign manufacturer to prepare his. And I brought Kevin up so he can give you some updates. He's been hands-on with this.
Good evening. Thank you all. Currently with the sign, we're probably, actually with our percentage, we're probably at 90%. The only thing we have left is a little bit of greenscape landscaping, a little soil prep. And I've been having two limestone caps made. They will not be ready to pick up until 12:14 and then those will need to be set. I've kind of had to procure the rest of the materials for the other signs. Those, I'm waiting on a ship date. I've been waiting on nine more pallets of material. The subcontractor that's putting the sign in itself should be done by 12:12. So the only thing we'll be lacking by the end of next week, hopefully, if we can get the limestone caps, will be done with the sign. Other than that, I mean, we've just been working as hard as we can with the weather we've had and we're ready to take on the next one if we can.
What did we decide to do on the lighting process?
That's a good question. I was approached by Middle Tennessee Electric about running a conduit. Have not had a chance to talk to electrician, but it's definitely something we can look into versus, it's on the sign we're currently working on, we can run a three-inch conduit per their standards and have permanent power out there so that if the city does grow out that way, and we choose to go with an irrigation system potentially, we have ways to expand on that, that area.
We're also going to look a little further into the solar power, solar powered lights and that type of thing, especially for that one.
Yeah, we'll compare the two to be, to see which was more cost-effective.
Is this something that can be accomplished after we complete the sign, as far as getting, if we need to get it easement? Because I know that we're going to have to get some easements from some of the property.
Yes, I have all the easement documentation from Middle Tennessee Electric for the standard easement requirements. And there's standard details to give the electricians for a price quote.
Is there any breakdown in the materials? Of course, we've seen the pictures of the stone that Mr. Hyatt sent out, but as far as the sign, can you give us any details of what materials, how the lettering?
I don't have the current breakdown in front of me and I have shared that information with Mr. Hyatt. I can have that information broke out completely for y'all tomorrow, if that's acceptable. Roughly, the stone itself was probably around $5,500. The sign is roughly, for the first sign, is two grand. So with, not withholding, I mean, with the labor we've got, we're saving money. And with the equipment we've got, we're saving money. And by subperforming the concrete work, we're saving money. So we should come in within the budget that we've discussed.
And then, has anybody spoke to Mr. Berkeley? He was talking at a meeting about possibly donating some time and, you know, plants or, I don't know exactly what he was wanting to donate.
I haven't spoken to him since the park board meeting. He came by and spoke to Don and I think, or to Keith today, didn't come up here. So we are, I talked to him a little bit after the meeting about what we were going to do with some holly bushes and things like that. He was in agreeance and he and I are going to, once it gets established out there and the other one, we're going to look at all three of them together and see what we can get accomplished as far as putting in the red bud, I think, our city tree, is that the right tree? Near the signs and some of the holly, the evergreen type things. So we have green, greenery all year on these. So we're going to do some transplanting of some things that are in the back of the fire department that are, really don't need to be there. And so we've got some things in-house already to save some money there, just transplanting. We've done that out front here. So similar to what you see in the front, evergreen type plants and natural, are plants that are natural to the area. So yes, we have talked to Mr. Berkeley and we will continue and go further.
And pulling resources and plants where we can and where they can be utilized to save on cost.
Well, I would just say, if there was an opportunity that he might be able to, A, I mean, he is hired by the city for this very, you know, purpose, so he might be able to give input. And then also, we don't know, he might be able to, you know, he alluded to possible donations, so, I mean, why wouldn't we take it?
Any other comments? Thank you very much. Item number F, update on city of Fairview projects?
Thank you, Mayor. We, obviously, we've, we're progressing rather nicely with the signs and we believe you'll be very pleased with that, as the public will as well. Also, the streetlights look like they're either finished or really close to being finished out here along Fairview Boulevard. And if you come through there at night, probably would still think it's daylight because we do have some, some good lights out there. And it's really, to me, it's, it's a welcome addition. The Booty Lake Road project, we are still shooting for the January 15, 2013 bid advertising, advertisement and probably a 22, 22-day window to accept bids and so, which means it'll be sometime in the middle of February when we open bids. And I would imagine around the end of February, 1st of March, by the time it starts. Also, the tri- Also, the Triangle School structural engineer who put the package together will be coming out tomorrow morning at 9:30 at Triangle School to inspect what has been done so we can move forward with whatever the next phase in that project may be.
Comments or questions from the board? City Manager, I have requested an updated sheet. Could I request that again, that we have an updated sheet? The ones that are completed be off the sheet. The ones that are assigned to people who are not working on the project be reassigned for clarification. And the funds and the timeframes, please. Any other comments?
New business tenant.
Discuss and/or take action on proposed vacation leave policy. City Manager Hyatt?
Thank you, Mayor. Shortly after I got here, staff and I started looking at our policy and procedures manual that has been in place for quite a while, I believe since about 2006, somewhere in there. And we feel like we're pretty strong in our manual. One thing we did all kind of agree on, and I guess we wanted to bring to you tonight, was to look at the possibility of changing and maybe recommend, a recommendation from staff that we change our current vacation leave policy. Currently, our vacation leave policy, you do not get any vacation whatsoever with the city until you're here one year, and then up through five years, you get 80 hours or two weeks. If you're a firefighter, after that first year, you get 18 hours a month. Theirs is calculated a little different time, and there is no crew vacation from year to year, no rollover at all. After five years, you get 120 hours, and if you're a firefighter on the 24-48 plan, you get 21.25 hours a month. What, and also no rollover. What we do find is that we do have a few employees who, for whatever reasons with projects, and the fact that we do have small staff, sometimes they don't get the chance to take vacation and they'll lose it. But one thing that we're trying to propose, and we have proposed, is the possibility that we go to a little different plan where after your first month, you actually earn vacation starting your first day, and you'll have eight hours a month. It's 96 hours a year, so that's an increase. The first through the fourth year, you go from 80 hours a year to 96 hours a year with an ability to rollover up to 20 hours. Your fifth through ninth year is the same as it currently is after five years. It's 120 hours a year or 10 hours a month, 40 hours of rollover, up to 40 hours. Your 10th through the 19th year, which we don't have a lot of people in that category, there's very few, but we don't have any, again, nothing that rewards anybody after five years in any capacity. So this would go to 12 hours a month or 144 hours a year with the ability to rollover up to 80 hours. Now, reason why we've kind of stuck at that 80 hours is because we don't want somebody to roll and roll and roll. I've seen plans where they've got up to 300, 400 hours that they roll over, comp time, so when they retire, you know, they're still on the books for six months. So we're trying to avoid some of that from taking place. And then 20 years and up, we're proposing 16.67 hours a month. That's 200 vacation hours a year, and we typically, I think we currently have about three employees that are above that 20-year range, and I could be wrong, it could be more. And of course, the firefighters would be subsequent, and we kind of calculated it together. We don't see an increase in the salary because we already have that in the budget. I mean, you're already getting paid for 2,080 hours a year, whether you're working or whether you're off. So that kind of comes into play. We don't typically backfill and put people in place. Sometimes the fire or police department will get their auxiliary or volunteer firemen to fill in, and we budget for that as well. So we don't see that as an increase, as any increase in the budget. It would be a running change, so there would be some prorated during the year. We were asking that it would begin January 1st, and we're here, or I'm here to entertain any questions or comments and see what you think.
How many paid holidays do we give?
We have 11 paid holidays and one personal day of birthday.
I really would have, I actually had discussed this, just wanting to know a little bit more about it, and called and asked the city manager about the structure, so I don't have a lot of questions on that. But I do have a concern with starting it before, I think it should, we should hold off to the next budget year. We have not budgeted, and it may or may not make a difference. So my request is, as we're discussing, that we consider a possible.
I think, I think it's a good point that Commissioner Carroll brings up. I'd also like to see kind of a more data in front of me, such as the impact with our spread of our employees. I don't need them by name, but how many do we have in each category and how many lost? That's a bad way of terming it. How many days will we be granting over? In other words, if we've got 10 people in the first category and they're jumping from, what'd you say, 80 to 96, then that's 160 hours worth of, worth of potential work that we lost. So we, there, that's a payback somewhere. That's, you know, that's four people's a week's worth of work. So I'd like to see the data on that. And the other thing is, I'd like to see a list of the holidays that we give. Because I, that, coming from the generous federal government, we don't get 12. So, so it, it, that struck me as a little, as a little high. If we're going to give it to them in vacation, I mean, we may want to consider rolling back a couple of those holidays, depending on what they are. I agree with our current policy of like, you know, closing Christmas Eve and Thanksgiving and stuff like that. That's not what I'm talking about. But if we're going to give extra vacation time that could be rolled over, I'm not sure giving birthdays is a real holiday.
Can I just ask who prepared this?
I did.
And it came from just acknowledgement, other place, concern?
Yeah, we looked at industry standard. We looked at some other cities and, I'm sorry.
We looked at other cities, and we looked at things that some of us have experience with and checked with in TASS a little bit, just to find out exactly what some of the other cities are doing. And it's, seems to be pretty much an industry standard. Some cities give more. I've been in cities and talked to a couple of cities that they gave, instead of giving sick and vacation, they just gave leave time. So it was more, they didn't differentiate between the two. We do. So we have two different policies there. And staff review, I mean, we talked about this as a staff and passed it around to each other and looked at the entire book and reviewed it internally.
So you feel like the current one is not, I mean, what brought up that you thought we needed? Because we have a manual this big, it's just one item in the manual, and I know there's probably, you've expressed concerns with the whole manual of thoughts. Is this something you just felt was really out of line to address it, or was there concern that came up?
Yeah, there's been some concern. Every new employee that starts says, oh, I don't get vacation until I'm here a year. And I had not been accustomed to that myself, and some of the other staff had not either when they had been with other cities and other organizations. And we just kind of felt like this was one area to start. Instead of going through a whole book, we, I mean, we could bring the whole manual through, but it wasn't that many things that we felt like needed to be addressed. This was really the one that was the only one that we felt like needed to be addressed now. Other things were the discipline policy, and we felt like that was in good shape. Other things were, I don't have in front of me, off-duty policies and travel policies. And we just felt like those were pretty, pretty well standard, industry standard. This is the only one we felt like was a little subpar. I mean, we all live with what we have, and we continue, will continue to. We just felt like this was something that we should discuss and see if there was an opportunity to improve for, not only for current employees who had been here longer. It wasn't so much employees that were, you know, one to 10 years as much as it was employees who have been here a long time and incoming employees as well. Because some of them transfer and come from other places where they've already got vacations planned, and we're like, nah, you know, you can't take your vacation. You can take it, but you can't get paid for it. So, you know, some concern there, and, which is very common for people to change jobs and have vacation plans, and, you know, we don't want to change their plans where they've made deposits and that. And no one person, this is not any one person, has come forward and said, you know, this is what we do. I've looked at this for a couple of years now and tried to take our time and review through the process. But I agree, we do need to provide some of this other documentation, and it would shed some light on some other things as well, yes.
If I could ask you another question, ma'am. We pay biweekly, correct? As I was listening to you, you were talking about a monthly accrual. Why wouldn't we set it up to run biweekly?
I'd never thought about that. Just never had exposure to anything like that.
That's the way the federal government did, was you got four hours for the first three-year service.
Got you.
You got, biweekly, four hours. Four hours sick, four hours annually. Now, four hours sick stayed your entire career. You never got more than four hours of pay period.
Right.
It was done, in essence, it was done by pay period because that's, that's how the employees were paid.
Right. I've just never been exposed to that, hadn't even thought about that, but that's something.
You just see, just, you might want to look at it. In our particular instance, if you gave, if you, with 26 pay periods, some years, 27 some years, 25 others, you know, it would be, it would be the easy way for them to keep up with it, an easy way for us to keep up with it, because some months are longer than others, and, you know.
Well, and also, I would, the only other thing I would like to mention is, you know, the rolling over hours, I can understand how, for people with, that have been here for a long time to encourage longevity, that would be a perk. But I do question automatically, somebody one to four years coming in, getting to rollover the time. As far as the way they earn the time, I mean, a lot of places, government, private, you know, they do it that way, and it's reasonable, you know. Just because in life, the first year that you have employees, somebody's, you know, might need to take off, they have kids. So, I mean, logically, I can see whether we do it as the vice mayor suggested, biweekly or, you know, monthly. I don't see a lot of difference. But if you could bring us back the requests that the vice mayor made, I think that would let us better make decisions.
Other comments?
The rollover, Andy, is that in addition each year? If you rolled over 80 hours and didn't use them for that year as well, you rolled over another 80?
No, 80 would be your.
80's in the bank, as much as you can have at a time.
80 is it.
Okay.
You'd lose anything else you didn't take.
If we, if we did on the one through four, don't you think it would be reasonable to at least let them roll over 40 hours as well? That way they would at least have a full week off if we were going to do anything. And you said there were three or so employees with the 20-plus years? The way I'm looking at that, that if we pass this, that automatically gives those people an extra two weeks right off the bat? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Because I'd never, I really have never been anywhere where you stop earning any kind of benefit that way for longevity. That's usually where you get your longevity pay.
Right.
I say that loosely. I mean, what's the benefit? You know, to, I get two weeks every year for the rest of my life or whatever it is that, you know, and, right.
Throw it at the max.
Right.
Well, and if we, I mean, if we started it with a new budget year like I suggested, it wouldn't automatically give them the hours to roll over. I mean, they would have to start accumulating just like everybody else with, you know, the new year. So, I mean, the first year, not necessarily.
City Manager, I'm not opposed to the conversion. I just need to see more information to understand what I'm hoping for.
I understand that.
10B, discuss and/or take action of the monies received from the beer board to be applied to the drug fund. Commissioner Sutton?
Mayor, we had a previous beer board meeting, and it was unanimous that we bring to the board to turn that money over to the drug fund for their use, the same principles that we have under the drug fund. And I'm most willing to do that.
Second.
We have a first and second discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? City Manager, items for discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing I want to remind you is that we do have the planning commission vacancies potentially, and we've got some applicants, and we're going to ask them to go to the next planning commission meeting. We'll get, make sure that tomorrow we get in touch with those so they can get an understanding of what goes on, and then we'll put this back on the next agenda, as we discussed at the last meeting. That's it.
Staff comments?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, you have a copy of my report. Planning Department has reviewed the final site plan and the architectural design for Fast-Paced Medical Clinic. We'll recommend the approval of that at the planning commission meeting next Tuesday night. Planning Department has also approved a minor subdivision plant for the Fast-Paced Medical Clinic as well. Building permit, Department has issued two building permits for the month of November. The total construction cost for those permits was $265,102. We issued 25 electrical permits. Complaints Department received four complaints, and we afford those to the appropriate department for resolution. Fielded 44 calls for service-related orders and forth those to the property departments for work to be completed. Building codes Department reviewed one commercial building plan for compliance, completed 39 building inspections, issued one certificate of occupancy. Codes violation Department received two complaints. There were no, there were two violation letters sent out, no letters of failure to comply, and no citations written.
Thank you. Other staff comments?
Thank you, Mayor. The Police Department of November stats, there was 46 arrests made within the city, six charges of DUI, five drug cases that were made, 197 citations were issued for the month. We had 21 accidents on our city streets and highways, three of those including injury, 19 non-injury. And we fielded 640 reported calls for the month.
Thank you. Other staff comments, please.
Thank you. I'd like to report, based on my calculations for November, leaf removal was roughly 88 loads. By my calculation and density, I'm willing to guess that the street department removed about a half million pounds of leaves in the month of November.
Wow.
As you can see, it's quite a task. Also, starting tomorrow, I'm working with Randy, the mechanic, and the guys down in the shop, and we're going to get everything ready for the salt trucks in winter weather. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We answered 71 calls last month, and we have some housekeeping for you. The county contract comes in midnight on December 31st, as you know, to turn over that area. The actual letter of our contract says I'll give them those trucks that we're going to pay and pass to them at midnight, and that's, that's not practical. I need to give them to them a few days in advance so they can train them, load all their equipment stuff on there. So we're going to, between Christmas and New Year's is when we're actually going to turn those trucks over. I'm going to send a guy over to train them because, especially the tanker, it's not easy. There will be some training there. Also, our replacement tankers due to be completed next Friday, and we hope to have that in place here that following week. We'll go, we'll go to Georgia to get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let you guys know, last meeting, the board approved the loan for the new tanker that Chief Cooper was just talking about, and I have the loan paperwork to be signed tonight at the 2.4% interest for four years, just as approved.
That's all, Mayor.
City attorney comments?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing further at this time.
Communication from the Commissioners?
Let's get the judge.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Let's go back to item two and three. I'm so sorry. Hello, sir. Welcome. Item two, swearing in of the elected officials, Judge Taylor. Oops. Sorry, guys.
Now, as I go through the oath, if you'll, if it'll want me one place, I'll say, state your name. Let your name. And then, everybody's going to be a city commissioner this time, and if you'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tony Sutton.
Having been elected.
Having been elected.
To the position of city commissioner.
To the position of city commissioner.
Of the city of Fairview, Tennessee.
Of the city of Fairview, Tennessee.
Make oath that I possess.
Make oath that I possess.
The qualifications required.
Qualifications required.
By the statutes of the state of Tennessee.
By the statutes of the state of Tennessee.
As set forth in the Tennessee Code Anticipate.
As set forth in the Tennessee Code Anticipate.
And that I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Tennessee.
The Constitution of the state of Tennessee.
The Charter and Ordinances of the city of Fairview.
The Charter and Ordinances of the city of Fairview.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I need each other to sign.
Commissioner Sutton has, will return in just a moment. May I move on down to communications? Communications, Commissioner Carroll?
I have nothing tonight, ma'am. Vice Mayor?
No, ma'am. Nothing from me.
Well, I'm stalling. You're not helping. Commissioner Johnson?
Nothing, ma'am.
Surprise, I have something. I would like to ask Director Levorn that on next agenda, we discuss the changed scope change, since we have moved forward with the signs, and it's no longer the grant with the signs, and the roadscape scope change. Are you able to work with the state to bring up something? Do you need us to discuss that? How would, how would you like to move forward with that subject?
I'll get in contact with Ms. Hazelwood and see what we need to do to ask for that scope change. And if it's something that I can do, if y'all want me to go ahead and say, we just want to do the landscaping and move forward, then I could go ahead and do that. Or if you want me to prepare something and bring it back to you all.
This is from Sean Bible. I don't know if she's the connect, but when she's addressing us about the roadscape project, Fairview Boulevard West, from Old Nashville Road to Fernvale Road. That means there was a specific section of 100 that was identified in that grant.
Right. Four lanes.
Okay.
The four lanes.
All right. I've said that for clarification, as well as just understanding, that's what we're requesting, that the signs no longer be part of that roadscape. And if that's something you can find out. I know we changed the scope for the Greenway, and it wasn't anything we voted on. So I do want to make sure that if there's anybody opposing or having an opposition to that, speak now.
Now.
None? Okay.
By the communications that I've had with Ms. Hazelwood, the preliminary design and the environmental will be provided by Lozen and Associates at no cost to the city. As long as the city moves forward with the contract, then it wouldn't be a cost. If we start in the process and decide we're not going to do it, and we have caused monies to be expended by the state, then we will be required to pay that money back to the state.
That's fair. Understand. So you would get the conversation of the scope change and the presentation of the request of the scope change, and then bring back to us what their answer is, and then we'll be discussing what you're talking about now?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right? Is everybody clear on that? Any concerns? Okay, and next is the safe routes to school update. I know there was some said, city manager, about something being done. Was it December? What is the safe routes to school update or position?
We talked a little bit today, Dawn and I did. There was a NEPA document that we're ready for that phase, which is the environmentals for that area. If I'm not mistaken, that's what we had discussed today. Mr. Levorn?
We've got a notice to proceed for the safe routes to school and the active transportation grant.
Okay.
For the PNE and NEPA, which is the preliminary engineering and environmental documents. And Mr. Hyatt had said that somebody was supposed to do the environmental for the safe routes, and had said that they were going to include the environmental for.
Old Franklin.
The Old Franklin as well. But I don't know who that person is.
It's a group out of Memphis. They came to us. The state provided this engineering group out of Memphis, and I have tried to get in touch with Diana Benedict today, and I should be in touch with her tomorrow to see where we stand as far as that's concerned.
And that's the MPO grant?
The active transportation.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay.
If they haven't done the environmental for us, then we will have to advertise for a request of qualifications for somebody to do that for us. And once we send that out and get those, that request for qualifications back, then we can choose the engineering firm to perform that for us.
And is that part of the grant to be reimbursed?
As long as you've got, as long as you've got a notice to proceed from the state, then they will reimburse you for that stage that you're in. And once we get the preliminary engineering and NEPA documents back to the state, then they will give us a notice to proceed for design. And once they give us a notice to proceed for the design, we will have to go back through the same process of asking for qualifications to be submitted to us, and then we will choose an engineering firm to do the design. And once the design is taken care of, we get reimbursed for that, then the state will give us a notice to proceed for constructions, and then we'll take the designs prepared by the engineer, and they will create a bid document, go out to bid, and then we can start construction.
Excellent. Thank you. And the last thing is, I would like to request a six-month snapshot budget workshop, January 17th, 6:00 p.m., prior to our regular scheduled Board of Commissioner meeting. Does anybody have a negative comment or change?
I was going to say that, and I forgot.
So that is all of my communications, and we'll move ahead up to three, election of the vice mayor. Looking for nominations.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Stuart Johnson.
Other nominations?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Tony Sutton.
Other nominations? Nominations to cease. I'd like to do a ballot vote. Ms. Teresa, would you provide us with some paper, please? City attorney, would you like to collect the ballots? Thank you, Senator.
Three for Stuart Johnson, two for Tony Sutton.
Congratulations. Commissioner Johnson? Do I have a motion for adjournment?
No, ma'am.
Let him have comments.
I'm so sorry, you were absent. Comments?
I'd like to, we've had a couple of things happen this past week in the city of Fairview. All of our employees do a great job all the time. We've been in use a lot concerning our first of all, and I'd like to, we've got some passes on the chief, I appreciate it, everyone's done, it's very important. If everybody doesn't mind, we've got to run that plan out of the city this week. Probably save them a ton of lives, be able to do that. Also, if they do that, if anybody comes in and does a good job, it's a normal life. So, we've been a lot of dollars in the state for driving a little bit. Thanks very much.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
First and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your patience.